Hey, it's seven o'clock, we'll get started to be extremely respectful of your time. This is a great group, thank you all so much for taking time out of your life to be here to hear this. I appreciate you very much, just a couple of commercials before I get really good and started. Just here to share with you about the bond, I want you to know and understand, as the superintendent of Sulfur Springs ISD, and maybe not all of you know that, I'm Michael Lamb, and I'm the superintendent here at Sulfur Springs. I have to be extremely neutral, just the facts, not for or against. So, please don't read that, because it's not easy for me to not be a little bit animated. So, as I try to pull back and make sure I stay on a very neutral level, I don't want that to be misunderstood as a lack of interest on my part, okay? So, I'm very interested in this, and in love sharing the facts with you on where we're at, and kind of how we got here. So, that's our goal tonight. I say, kind of tongue in cheek, just to set the stage a little bit, when we sent out our first blurb, or press release, we called it, I read all 419 Facebook comments. And a lot of what I'm trying to do here is answer those questions. And I usually get a little bigger laugh out of the 419. Y'all were pretty stoked here, so loosen up just a little bit. It truly is, I think, when that happened, you know, our community's asking good questions. Absolutely, we need to be transparent. Absolutely, timing's a little questionable right now. Absolutely, we should have a plan in place. So, I really am doing a lot of things that are intended to answer some of the things I've seen. I took two or three calls today, so I'm always trying to answer and help you understand where we're coming from, okay? So, I'll start here, and just kind of talk about it, in the spirit of, man, you should have a plan. I will tell you, we do have a plan, and I try to say, there's a 20, 30-year plan here. A lot of it's been dictated to me based on what's been done here even before I was here. So, I start here and share, these are a lot of the projects that have been done here since 2006. Now, I came in 2012, so I want to point out real quick, in 2006, a $10 million bond for what we call fine arts at the high school right now, okay? And it says 2012, but it was really 2009, then another bond was passed here, and that did the middle school, the multipurpose, some additions to Douglas, and some SSES renovations. That was a $48 million bond. That was 10 years ago, basically. On May 1st, which we're about 20 days away, I would have been here 10 years. And so, when I started on a May 1st, 10 years ago, we were still finishing up the middle school. June, July, I'm sorry, May, June, July, August, we're sweeping it up, we're trying to get started. So, the minute I'm here, we're fresh off of a new bond. We couldn't talk about new bonds for the first three, four, or five years I was here, because we're already paying these other bonds, okay? So, what did we do in the time that I've been here? You've seen it. We've redone a football stadium, a baseball field, a softball field, an auditorium, a culinary arts situation. What else is on here? High school track upgrades. We've done a lot of things in the 10 years I've been here, really and truly with a small amount of money. I've seen different things that said, well, you should have saved that $10 million that you spent on the football stadium for this. $10 million towards a $35 million elementary school doesn't really go a long way. So, what we did is we had some funds during this time, and we quote "took care of the things that we could take care of while we were building bond capacity." That's been kind of the plan. Somewhere along the way, in this 10-year period of time, right before the COVID spring break, there was signs that we were growing. And I was hearing some things from the city about the mine property and some things like that. But when we started looking, five, six years ago, at our facility situation, and when I started looking at age of buildings, and you guys can play this game with me just a little bit too, if you've been in any of our buildings, I was surprised to see the age of some of them, thinking it was very different. I was surprised to see that Johnson and Bowie are actually the same age. They, when you go in those buildings, they look a lot different, primarily because of size, I think. But once we put kind of up in front of us the age of the buildings, then I'll ask you, what do you think is a reasonable amount of time a school building should be an elementary school building? Any thoughts on that? Do what? I mean, what's reasonable in your mind?
As long as it's in good condition, it doesn't matter when it is.
Okay. Well, this is a 100-year-old building, and I don't think when you walk around and look in here, you would say, "Well, we could do this and do this, and it would be appropriate for our elementary kids." At some point, it does tend to age out on what's appropriate for the kids. In our case, we have electrical issues, and you end up to add electricity, you put things outside the walls and that kind of thing. We've had plumbing issues at all of our elementary, where we've had to redo the pipes. At some point, the amount of maintenance that you do is not worth, for instance, a new building. If you do research, it'll tell you, elementary should recycle every 40 years. That's probably a little bit too young. I think 50, 60 is probably a little more appropriate. What I noticed when I was looking at our situation, both Houston and Austin had been demolished when they were 80 years old. So, we use 80, right, wrong, or indifferent. I think 80 is a little bit long, but we use 80. And even if we thought 80 was too long, I think we're kind of backed into our corner on what we can really do in that situation. So, it has to do with our age of buildings, and just having basically a replacement plan ever so many years, whatever that becomes. What I keep noticing is that six buildings, Travis, Douglas, SSES, Austin, Bowie, and Johnson, in the next 25 years are all going to get to be 80 or older. That becomes what I say the plan really is. To realize the high school's 43 years old, and it's going to have to be addressed at some point, I hate the thought, and in my mind, that's young enough, I won't have to address it in my tenure here. But the next person will. I hate the thought of leaving six buildings plus the high school for the next person to address within the next 30 or 40 years. So, our goal has become, how do we put a plan together to take care of these six buildings over the next 20 to 30 years? Travis being the oldest, Travis being really and truly the most rundown, the one we spend the most money on to redo pipes, to redo things, to keep it up and running. Right now, Travis has tile in it that they don't even make anymore, so we can't replace it. We pull that tile out, we paint it, and we stick it back and hope it works for a little while. So, this, as I've seen and heard people say, "You should have a plan, you should have a plan." I made an attempt to kind of draw out a 20-year plan. It's hard to say what somebody 10 years from now needs to do, or even 20 years from now needs to do. But what it boils down to is if we address these things now, $93 million worth, then in 10 to 15 years, I hope we build bond capacity where the next layer can be addressed, and then the next layer would be addressed. I have no idea how much the next bond would be in 10 to 15 years. Prices going up, that kind of thing, there's no doubt, things will be higher. So...
Where do you get bonding capacity numbers from? How does that number originate? Because I may have some new words around here, but there's got to be some sort of planning in that.
There is. When we're paying our bonds, we have a financial advisor that tells us when we're doing good, tells us when we're doing bad, tells us when we can refinance, tells us when we've almost made all our payments. So, probably six years ago, they told us, "If you'll wait till this year, you can get X number of dollars without a tax increase." You wait till this year. So, we've known for six years kind of what we were shooting for. In the meantime, things got a little better, legislation got a little better. At one time, not long ago, prices were better, then COVID hit, and it's all gotten worse. So, we knew what the bonding capacity was, things were getting better than even that, but then all of a sudden, that changed. We actually wanted to do this process, starting school the year after the COVID spring break. We obviously held off. We held off. That particular May, in the state of Texas, record-breaking for the amount of bonds that passed that year. Why, I'm not sure. I feel like we missed an opportunity, I don't know. But I just didn't feel like it was time to hit our community right in the middle of COVID with the idea of a bond. That went away, the next school year came around. We really just can't afford to keep waiting on something like this to get it rolling. So, we started the process at the beginning of school this year. When you're going to try to decide what elementary should look like in the future, you've got to think, what do we want our elementarys to look like 20 years from now? And basically, we really have, through all the different research and things, we'd like to head towards having four campuses that are K through 5 elementarys. So, at one time, we considered three, what would three look like? Four is the most optimal thing we can do, if you take accountability into place, if you take efficiency into account, from the number of counselors and nurses you need at different campuses. Four elementary schools that are K through 5, at least as it shows right now, would be the most ideal thing we could do. So, the challenge became, how quickly can we get four elementary schools? Well, Bush can do that right now, just knowing that there's three wings at Bush, and one of those wings is full of special ed offices right now. So, for it to be a K through 5, you'd have to relocate those folks from there to a different office space. But Bush could do it now. Bowie with one additional hall right now could do it. If you build a new Travis, there's your third. So, the question became, how do we get to the fourth campus that could be a K through 5? We went into this process thinking that we could add to Johnson in such a way that it could do that. But once we started looking at everything, Johnson is, and for whatever reason, Johnson hasn't been updated or added to quite like Bowie has over the years. So, Johnson is small, Johnson is older, and Johnson is on a piece of property that's not optimal. So, the money it would take to get it to be that was not reasonable money to spend for that situation. So, it threw us into a "what next" type attitude, or what was our next situation? If we can do this bond, and can do Bowie and Travis in this bond, then we lack one more campus to get there. But we couldn't possibly turn this 93, add another $35 million on that to get to that, so we've got to wait. And this is kind of the plan that it would be, it's a step towards it. Johnson would stop being a campus, those special ed folks would move into that as office space. And this is a 100-year-old building, and this is my office and some of these people here. Nobody cares when people are officing in an old building, they just don't like kids being in older buildings. So, we could move those special ed folks out of Bush into Johnson. That takes care of Johnson for what it is as a building for a long time. Gives you what you need at Bush. We can add on to Bowie, and we could end up for now with two K through 3 campuses like we have. And Travis continue to be the K through 3 campus it is. Little bit of question whether Travis would end up being immediately a K through 5 or stay a K through 3. For now, what we had to do, kind of in a new plan mode, and I don't know if my colors and things make sense, SSES, the green across there, as everybody's 4 or 5, that's where they go to 4 or 5, at this point, I would say it needs to go through Travis too. After visiting with some of the Travis parents, would you prefer your students to go all the way K through 5 while the rest of the district is changing? Or would you rather stick with the K through 3, go ahead and change 4 or 5, and wait? I think the consensus at this point is, K through 3, let's keep doing it how we're doing it. And when, in 10 years, if we obtain bonding capacity again, ready to address SSES, we can make the decision at that point. We like this 4 or 5 situation, so we'll just build a new SSES and keep going? Or no, K through 5 is definitely the direction we need to go? So, a new SSES would actually be the fourth K through 5 campus at that point. And at that point, basically, 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, when we can address SSES, we would be in the structure we want to be in for a long time to come. With the ability to, back to this number situation, when you're building, when you're thinking, a lot of times when you build a new elementary, you always talk about building some growth potential in it. I believe, and through the research and the things and talking to people, if we build one school that can expand from four classes per grade to six fairly easily, and have one for the sake of growth, instead of all three being able to grow, then let's just say that's Bowie at the time, that can grow to six per class for a while. There's a number you can hit that will make you know it's time for the fifth elementary. You can do a numbers game that works for you to know when the fifth one is. The way we had it at one time, and this is a difference and a step, when Douglas was a single-grade, 5th grade, it could only hold so many people. And we didn't know at the time, I don't even remember what it was, I think it was about 360. And basically, we knew, if a class of 380 or 400 ever comes through here, Douglas can't hold. And we had no solution for that. So, we're better off, instead of limiting ourselves, putting ourselves in a number situation where by formula it tells us when to go to the next elementary school. So, once you've kind of decided, that's kind of where we're headed, how did this come about? We reviewed district-wide enrollment projections, and like I said, there was visibility, there was visible growth the spring break before COVID. And all of a sudden, when COVID hit, everything just seemed to slow down. As we started this process, we still brought the demographer in. The demographer looked and said, "Yeah, it just doesn't look like they're growing much for the next five years." But there's a feeling that in five years, with what potentially can come on the mine property, there's a feeling that that rock wall, green will grow, will come. Particularly when the bridge and rock wall finishes up. There's a feeling that that growth will come down, and the demographer felt like it was five years. Even since this process has started, I really don't know what's common knowledge or not, but you realize a pretty big neighborhood is supposed to be coming to town even now. That's the information that's new since all this started. That would change things pretty drastically. There's also a pretty big company wanting to come to town, they established it in our last board meeting. They're trying to pick between us and Tulsa right now. But if that company comes, it will change things pretty drastically, for the better, for our taxpayers in this scenario here. So, even as this has started, things are happening. We brought together 50 community members, a lot of straight, running, straight community people, a lot of teachers, different people came together in this room, six meetings, we studied a lot of things. So, basically, we had $153 million worth of deemed needs. Then we trimmed down to 93, to say, "These are the most critical needs now." And that's what that group helped do. Asked the board to call the bond, and they did that, and that bond is to be voted on May 7. So, let me share with you a little bit, because the big thing here is always going to be taxes, okay? Just showing you and telling you how schools function. We have two pots of money, M and O and INS, maintenance and operation. That's the pot of money we get from the state, basically, and from taxpayers that allows us to pay salaries, it allows us to buy chairs, tables, do the traveling we do. M and O is our daily money that we use in budget and all that. INS is money that we get that you voted on. You said we could have through bonds, just like you go into the bank and saying, "I want to buy a home, I want a mortgage." That's what our INS pot of money is all about for us, okay? So, we'll talk for a little bit about M and O. So, here's a historical tax rate for Sulfur Springs ISD. I'm going to show you just a picture real quick. Tax rate used to be as high as $1.50. In 2006, it dropped to $1.14, came back up to $1.41. Has really done nothing but trickle down a little bit in the time that I've been here. We're going to talk a lot about tax rate and tax value. The tax rate, in the 10 years I've been here, has never done anything but go down, okay? So, that's what that line shows. Let me go back here and talk a little bit about... This line represents the M and O, this line represents the INS. It tells a story, let's look for a second. Eight cents, seven cents, seven cents went to 10 cents in 2006. In 2006, when the INS pot of money went from seven cents to 10, why did it do that? The bond. That bond in 2006, that $10 million, we needed three cents going into the pot that is INS to pay that bond that was 2006. 10 cents went to nine cents, I'm going to say went to 36 cents, but it leveled out at 32. What's the difference in nine cents and 32 cents? 23. What changed? Why did we go from nine cents to 32 cents in 2009? The bond that was in 2009. So, basically, that $48 million bond that was voted on required that pot of money, that set of taxes, to go up 23 cents to make that payment, okay? I want you to keep in mind, 23 cents got us $48 million 10 years ago, okay? 23 cents got us $48 million 10 years ago. In the meantime, the M and O has been as high as $1.41, $1.42. In 2008, the state said it can't be any higher than $1.4. So, we've been $1.4 for a long time, until the last three years. It's gone down to 97, 94, and 87. That's the M and O tax rate, it's dropped at that level for the last three years. Let me share with you a little bit about M and O.
Sorry, has the cap changed?
Which cap?
The 104.
It's changed in the same, no, it's not changed one up. They did, they tell us what it should be now. It's never been the case. They tell us what it should be, and I'll explain why right here. So, what you need to understand about school money and school taxes, they count our kids, they count our special programs, and they say, "The state has a formula." "Sulfur Springs ISD, you need $42.5 million to have a school, okay?" Now, when I collect taxes from you, and you give it all here, and it's $30 million, how much is the state going to send me now? $12.5. I'm going to raise taxes, and next year, you're going to give me $40 million. How much are they sending me now? $2.5, okay? So, a couple of years ago, when all your taxes went up drastically because of tax value, several people looked at me and said, "What are you doing with the extra money?" There is no extra money. We don't get extra money. The way they do this is they say, "Taxpayers, pay your bill, and we'll fill in the rest." So, there is no extra money, and that's the game they play, really and truly. So, we're kind of sitting here at this $42.5. They tried to, so this is something we've complained about legislatively for several years. A few years ago, the percentage was higher on the taxpayer than it was the state on how they gave us money. And through that complaining process, they tried to fix it, but what their fix became, "Okay, I'll tell you what, we're going to tell you what your tax rate can be so that it won't be that good, and so that we'll end up paying a little more than the taxpayer does." Didn't really change anything for you, but it did square that up a little bit on how much comes from which place, okay? So, it's, I gotta say, factual. They do some interesting things. There's three problems with this funding system. There is no excess anymore, and yes, there was a point in time where, when taxes went up, we did benefit, very minimal. Once again, the $42.5, if you've ever heard the term Robin Hood, Robin Hood all across the state. If we were Highland Park, and the taxes that came in are $60 million, which is 18 more than our 42, what happens then? We give money away to other tent towns. So, when the taxes are that good, that's when we have to ship money down the road. As far as I know, as long as I've been here, we've never been a giver. We might have been a taker in the first couple of years here. But when that thing is off one way or the other, you get from people or you give to people. But it's all based on their form, so we're kind of right there at a square place. There is no excess, and appraisal gap, okay? And we've only had to do this the last year or two. Our local folks say, "They appraise your house, and they say it's at this value." The state says, "We think your appraisals in Sulfur Springs ought to be this." And so, what happens? We collect taxes, and we get this much money from you. They say, "Yeah, but it should have been this," so they don't send us the difference. In the last two years, have been the two times that hit us to the tune of about a billion and a billion and a half dollars. I don't know if you saw it in the paper a year or two ago, when they were talking about local tax values being low and needing to go up. I have no idea what each one of you thinks about your tax values, and they may have doubled or tripled at times, but there is a feeling in a statement in the state that says, "They're not as high as they should be." And that right now is hurting schools, but obviously, you know, we're not necessarily in favor of it hurting our taxpayers either. We would like for them to fix the problem a different way than just putting it on the taxpayer. It's based on attendance, not enrollment, that's the other problem with this. We prepare every day as if 4,200 kids are going to show up. We don't know when they're going to be asked. If we function at a 96% attendance rate, which that's kind of where we've been for a long time, they only send us 96% of those dollars, which is another way for them to kind of keep 4%. They say, "Well, you didn't have kids 4% at the time, so there's no need for you to have all of that." Not a real great way to fund schools, in my thoughts. That M and O budget, that's $42.5 million, 82% of it is in people, staff, paying for tutoring, different things. So, $35 million of our $42.5 goes towards people. We've been doing about 2% in utilities, which leaves about 16% for the other costs. When we're talking in our budget meeting, it's as simple as stuffing people to me. Stuffing people is how I talk about it. So, our stuff, $6.5 million, is really and truly not very much when you think about the 40 different entities we've got to spread that out across. So, $6.5 million spread out over 40 entities, the notion that, and this is not offending anyone, I don't say it to, I get it. Well, that $93 million is all going to football. No, it's not. Several things. On that side, it can't go over here. Even if we wanted to spend a lot of money in football, we don't have a lot of money to spend in football. So, by the time you get there and look, the 4.47 of the $6.5 million goes to athletics. Athletics is made up of football, basketball, baseball, softball, middle school. So, very little of our overall budget truly goes to football, or any other sport, or any other school. The same pain that anybody that spends or feels in buying instruments. Instruments are expensive. We don't give these folks enough money in their budgets to give them. That's why we fundraised. We have that argument, seems like every year. "Gosh, we sure fundraised a lot, I wish we could stop doing that." I do too, but we can't possibly fund these programs and buy the kind of instruments that are necessary, and the kind of helmets that are necessary, and the kind of bats that are necessary. There's not enough. Same thing goes for teachers. Why do teachers put their own money in the classroom? Because we don't give them enough when it comes right down to it, okay? Everybody, real kind.
What are those percentages to like none of the school districts? Are those realistic percentages, or not quite me compared to?
Well, say it again.
Does that make sense?
In my opinion, I wouldn't get caught up necessarily in what these are, but that's a good question for right here, okay? So, the 82% in people, if you want to study it and check me on it, here's what I'll tell you. When that's lower, when you have less people, and I'll just tell you, we've added over 100 positions in the 10 years that I've been here. I think we were very understaffed when I first got here. We've added positions. When that 82% is down around 76%, I think you feel the pain of being understaffed. Whether it be, we didn't have counselors on every campus, we didn't have nurses on every campus. There were a lot of things that we've added over time that I would say make us 82% to be is the sweet spot. You have to make a decision, are you about people or about programs? Because in comparison, I saw a real comparison one time to a school very similar to us, that paid better. Their 82% was probably 85 or 86. Had a conversation with somebody in the next few days that worked there to man y'all pay with. "Yeah, you're right, we don't get anything. We bring paper from our house, we don't travel, we get nothing." So, you could bump your personnel up, if you get up to 85 and cut that 6.5 down, you're starting to feel it in the people buying their own things and that kind of stuff. If you take eighty-two down to seventy-six, you start to feel it in the understaffed aspect. Eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-one, that little range right there, in my opinion, is, you, you can study a bunch of schools if you like. That's the sweet spot. And I've studied those, so at, to answer your question, what's it compared to? It really depends on the philosophy of the district. Are you about people? Are you about telling people to bring their own paper? What are you about? And that varies when that number right there varies. The INS money? So if you took a handout, the first chart on there is a little different than this. The first chart you see does not have a homestead exemption accounted for. Okay, so on that chart, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home with no homestead exemption. Now, I don't think I've said it yet, I don't know that it's very clear. And this bond we're asking for eight and a half cents. We have, we're asking for that INS money to go up eight and a half cents. So what does your chart say on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home it will make your taxes go up a month? Fourteen dollars. So that's, that becomes any bond person's sales pitch. For fourteen dollars a month, right now, that's a breakfast at McDonald's. We used to say for two, for two Starbucks trips, uh, you can have all this, okay? The reality is, we do benefit from a twenty-five-thousand-dollar homestead exemption. So that chart that says fourteen, this chart that has the twenty-five-thousand-dollar homestead exemption on it, at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home is twelve. Twelve dollars a month. So whether it's fourteen, no homestead exemption, twelve with a homestead exemption, taxes go up somewhere between twelve and fourteen dollars on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Okay, you may not know this. In this next election, you get to vote on if you would like for that homestead exemption to change from twenty-five-thousand dollars to forty-thousand dollars. Do you think that's in danger at all to not pass? I, I honestly, I keep looking for a real answer, and I have had one. I had one person telling me, yeah, I voted no. That hurts schools. I don't know what that's gonna do to that. But I don't think this is not gonna pass. So, but, but we can't pretend it's the law. That's why there's a statement down here that says this has to pass to be true. Assuming the forty-thousand-dollar passes, that two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, now your taxes go down three dollars and forty-five cents. So how does that happen? Now, remember, this is all based on a tax value, on, on a value of a homestead staying the same. And the tax rate staying what it is now or going to this, okay? If your value goes up, that three forty-five goes up. So here's a real example, okay? In our community, this particular house in two thousand thirteen actually sold for two-hundred-thousand dollars. Okay, it's valued on the books at a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. There was a dollar thirty-six tax rate at the time. This person paid two thousand two hundred dollars of taxes, school taxes, this particular year. Okay, the value went up the next year. The tax rate went down a penny from six to five. They paid more in taxes. Why? Because the value went up. The rate went down, the value went up, paid more money in school taxes. Value stayed the same, rate stayed the same, but this was the first year for the homestead exemption. So pay, ta, the, the amount they paid out was lower because of homestead. Stayed the same, stayed the same, stayed the same, stayed the same. Value didn't change, but tax rate went down to a dollar twenty-eight. Value went up. Tax rate went down. Payout went down. Value stayed the same, tax rate went down, tax payment went down. This person paid their lowest taxes in twenty-twenty-one of all these years. The school tax rate did nothing but go down every single time, or every time. The tax rate went down, the values went up because the tax rate went down ultimately. That, that's not true for everybody. Some of these values have gone up to the place where you may not be paying in twenty-twenty-one your lowest taxes in a twelve or thirteen-year period. But for this particular house, now, I have no idea. You know, you know in your mind. Several of us benefit from, when I'm looking at my tax bill and I know my house is worth something, and in this case, if it's worth two-hundred thousand, but I know they valued it at one sixty-six, am I a little bit happy about that? When they value it lower than I know it's really worth, I'm happy about that when? When I'm paying taxes. When do I want that to flip? When I'm ready to sell it, right? I don't know how many people, I'm, I'm just sharing this with you. This is a real example, and I know lots of people that come talk to me. That hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar value, what's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home worth? Somebody that paid two-hundred-thousand dollars ten years ago, what's that worth today, you know? Three hundred-ish. Hundred-and-eighty-six. That contributes to the thought process, we're paying values here, the state says the value should be here. If this is true a lot, and I don't know if it is or isn't, then that starts to, to make you understand this value differential that we're, we're living with. I do hear from people that say, my taxes have gone up fifty, seventy percent. I don't know if that means your value is way higher than, than really, if you actually have or what that means. But this particular example kinda shows, um, yeah, there's times we're paying taxes on something less than we really have. County, city, and hospital are the other entities. Lots of people that I visit that don't realize you're paying more taxes than just school. So every time somebody looks at me and says, it's my fault their taxes are high, all I can tell you is I'm in control of the tax rate, and all it's done is go down over time. If your taxes are higher today than they were before, take a look at those breakdowns and see if it's really the school or not, okay? So here's a reality of, of what we're asking. Two-hundred-thousand-dollar home with a forty-thousand-dollar homestead exemption, at the current tax rate, would say this men, this, this many dollars in taxes, at the current tax rate for INS, this many. Both of those are less than it's been at the twenty-five-thousand-dollar homestead exemption, which means my tax payout's gonna be less. Forty-thousand dollars, same numbers, but this number is eight point five higher than this one. The rate goes up eight point five. Six thirty-two is higher than the four ninety-six and higher than the five forty-three. But when you add these two together, they're still lower than what it's been at the twenty-five-thousand dollars. And that is ultimately why we can say taxes would go down three dollars and forty-five cents. That's all assuming those rates stay the same and those values don't go up. So once again, this particular bond, everything's staying the same. On a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, we can argue taxes don't go up. On somebody like me that has one home with one homestead exemption. You have more than one home, it's a little different now, okay? Homestead exemption. I do this because, um, we're quick to say, and if you're sixty-five, your taxes are frozen. I caution anybody to say it and say it like that. I like for people to understand what that means. First of all, we had to understand what that means, and, and now we share it. The key is, homestead of a person sixty-five years or older cannot be increased above the amount paid in the first year after the person turns sixty-five. We're quick to look at somebody and say, well, you're sixty-five, your taxes are frozen. That's not entirely true, okay? Here's why. In this same scenario, if this person turns sixty-five in this year, this is what freezes their payout, twenty-one fifty. Rates and values can still fluctuate up and down. But this person will never pay more than this twenty-one fifty, okay? But very unique, whenever they created this law, I don't know that they expected this to happen. Very unique, this person's taxes have actually gone down in five or six years. So now, are they paying this frozen amount or are they paying this lesser amount? You what? They're paying the lesser amount. Obviously, you wouldn't make somebody pay more than, than what everybody else has to pay at the time. But if this eight and a half cents causes this to go up to say two thousand, what's that person gonna pay? What if it's two thousand five hundred? Twenty-one fifty. That's what gets frozen. So I hate looking at somebody saying, well, your taxes are frozen. There is a point in time where it can go up. And if that were to happen to somebody, they're gonna look at me and say, you said they wouldn't go up. They're frozen back to where you turn sixty-five. And it's rare that you're actually paying less taxes six years later than when you turn sixty-five, okay? The idea is, we'll freeze your taxes and as taxes go up, yours won't. But because once again, tax rate has gone down, this is a unique situation that's happened. Who made the tax rate go down? The school. Keep that in mind. So what does this bond have? And I visited with somebody today and, and kinda realized maybe what you're saying. I keep hearing transparency. And part of me says, I don't know that we can be any more transparent. But I think I understand where the, the misunderstanding is. A new Travis Elementary Campus. The first thing we ever put out had dollars buy this. And in my mind, it's been there all along. But I realized today, you can't hardly find a place that shows the dollars buy it. And that's part of the, the misunderstanding on what's what. New Travis is an estimated budget figure at thirty-five million dollars. I'm not gonna remember all the rest, but we're gonna make that correction, okay? Some renovations to Bowie, Bush, Sulfur Springs Elementary, Douglas, and I'm gonna explain these further in a second. High school additions, Career and Technology Center, Fine Arts, twenty buses, and Capital Improvement Projects District Line. Saw a lot of comments that said, capital improvements, what in the world is that? Rightful question, good question, okay? Yes, we owe that transparency. Uh, Travis, new elementary, right here by SSE, is on top of the track that's over there. So the negative I've heard here is this is gonna create a traffic nightmare. I don't believe that to be true. We think we can control traffic with these cut-through streets, and we can do really as many as, as we need to and have windy roads. This used to be a middle school that held a thousand people. These campuses combined will hold a thousand people. We can handle the traffic here. We wanna even put possibly a cut-through road here to help alleviate this. If we do enough of this type of thing, traffic won't be an issue. In ten years, I don't think that'll be a campus anymore. Property's one of the biggest struggles in any kind of bond process, going to find land. Uh, so anytime you can do on your own land, and this is our best spot, that we have land for, for a campus. So I hate to abandon this thought because people feel like we're gonna congest that too much. I don't think we will. I think we can control it. It's a great place for a camp.
When you provide more details, um, about the, the individual line items, can you provide some details on that campus? What's its size and, and some, some kind of, I understand right now you may not have an answer to every single question, and things can change, and you're not starting construction tomorrow with a riverboat, so I get it. But having some kind of understanding of what the project looks like, or anything more than, than Travis Elementary replacement. Like, and then I love that you told us now like the location, because I didn't know it at all.
Thirty-five million dollars, the problem is, and we've been asked that question a bunch of different ways. The notion that we would bid it out, do all that now, we're still possibly two, maybe even three years away, it would be, it's just, it would be so different. That's almost impossible to do. That's a thirty-five million dollar budget, based on our construction group looking at the things they built the last few years and a per-square-foot kinda cost. That's where the budget comes from. I, I'll give you an example. I told you, um, last year, record-breaking bonds passed. Royce City passed a big bond, I was visiting with their superintendent. Their CTE Center, they passed the bond, everything went haywire. They did their bonding by the time, or their, their bidding and all that. By the time they were to that point, they were eight million dollars off. And that's the fear we have of doing too much right now. Thirty-five million dollars, how far would it go on building the school like this? We have inflation kinda built in, it's a, it's a good guess right now. But we're a long way off from line items on this particular school. I will tell you, when I say we need to build Travis to hold all of this, okay? And, and to me, it needs to be designed to be that big. But once we design it, as of right now, we're talking about only using this much. And we may be talking about only using this much. So depending on how pricing goes, if we could build the whole thing with that thirty-five million, we probably would to be ahead. I don't think we're gonna be able to. So we're back to, depending on pricing, depending on the bidding and all that, where can we really land with that school? I don't know if that answers your question. I mean, obviously, as we get closer, more details will come out. But I don't know if that's a deal breaker for you in the voting aspect. I don't think we're gonna have great details before the bond is voted on. Does that make sense? Bowie needs an additional eight classrooms to be able to be the K through five we'd like for it to be. It doesn't necessarily have to be here. Bowie's another place that can be, basically, a whole new Bowie can be designed, and we're back to the land talk. A whole new Bowie can be built here. And once again, when you can build on your own property and not displace kids, very advantageous for what we wanna do. Somehow, some way, whether it be here or here, Bowie would be designed, but enough of it would be built to be able to do this next ten years, knowing that we would do the rest in the next. That's why it's kinda on both, both of this. Because there's only, I believe, ten million allotted to eighty-six million for this Bowie addition. Bush has a million dollars allotted to it to redo some of the, the parking and some drainage issues it has uh, in the, and you'll see in a minute, in the, uh, Capital Projects, a roof. Douglas, Douglas is a school, once again, land becomes an issue. When you see the age of Douglas, it's pretty much this, this main part. This is actually a new part within the last ten, fifteen years, and this is a new wing within the last twenty, twenty-five, I think. So the idea of how would you ever replace Douglas? Go down the road and build different, all that, is not really a popular thought. This can be built in three, three phases. You can build a new wing right here, and then tear this one down. And build a new one here, and tear this one down, and build a new one here. So if we, if we get on track to kinda address that in three phases, we never have to leave that land, is what it boils down to. Capital improvements, the nine million dollars. Our group, along with the professionals that we've hired, went through, Dan and our management group went through, basically, the ideal was, there's basic bare-bones things that have to be done to all these buildings. If, if, if we decided in the bond process to totally redo Austin Academic Center, this is basically, if you're gonna do that, you've gotta address these HVAC issues, these electrical issues, these plumbing issues. So, I, you know, I told you a hundred and fifty-three million dollars. At one time, this capital improvement was double this. This was a trimming down aspect. There's nine million dollars worth of stuff we can do. That's three roofs, several HVAC at high school and middle school, and plumbing. That's nine million dollars worth of stuff to be done that's gonna be beneficial to us. We really and truly have another nine we could do with other campuses that we trimmed down to this. So there's really no trickery or, or fluff in this. It's been trimmed down to the basic, basic bare bones. Austin Academic Center, which is our campus, uh, our alternative campus, and now is a campus for accelerated graduation, that whole half billion allotted is all basic stuff. HVAC doors, electrical, and plumbing. There's no fluff going into Austin. Just trying to get it to be a campus. Just trying to get it to be a campus longer until we can address it. The high school, all of this is that basic stuff. About two weeks into school, the plumbing at the cafeteria at the high school fell in. So we've already started all this in a emergency situation. Just goes to show, yes, it was put up here as a need, and it was a need. Uh past that, the kind of things, the ten million dollars that we wanna do at the high school, front office space, remodel the rooms when the CTE comes out, AV system in the cafeteria, facelift to the student side of the building, parking lot on the student side of the building, and then there won't be hardly any money left, but what's left can upgrade painting, lighting, and flooring. Better to show it in picture. Between the current fine art and the current gym, we'd like to fill in with office space. This will improve security. This will, this is one of the things, as we look at a different room needed in a high school, uh they've been wanting to build new office space for a couple of years. If we build new office space in there that creates a better open environment and improves security, the old office space can become what they've been looking for. A new band hall, because our band is much bigger now than it used to be. Freeze up the old band hall for the drill team to finally get a dance place that they've never had. Some fire rooms to expand that they've never had. So it's not just about band, it's about several of the fine art programs. And then the CTE center, I should stay up there. This CTE building, kind of out front, would house six programs. Auto, woodworking, culinary arts, robotics, and health science technology. We have some really cool things in this district from the standpoint of, uh our maintenance group is amazing. When you go into Travis, and this is what some of the community groups did, it looks awesome. They do a great job of making it look great. A lot of people look and say, well, there's nothing wrong with this building, when they don't really know the kind of maintenance and things we do to get it to that point. When you walk in our current auto tech center, you say, golly, I didn't know we had this. This is amazing. And it is, but it can be so much better. From the standpoint of, uh I used this example earlier today. My dad was a mechanic when I was a kid, so when you can go in under the hood and change a carburetor or whatever, I can't talk the language. Obviously, this day and age, that's not what they do. They hook up computers, those computers diagnose, and then they do things based on it. Our CTE director has asked me for the last four or five years, can we get some updated equipment? I think we're about to build a building. I think we're about to build a building. We've kind of put it off, COVID put us off. We do amazing things in these areas right now. You wouldn't know the difference of what we can do and what we currently do. Health Science Technology houses three hundred and fifty kids, and they do it in a room smaller than that hallway, really. They have a hospital bed, uh just a few things to do a great job. Keith Yimmel does woodworking for two years. He just worked under an awning that we had out back. And now he's created himself a classroom, and it's phenomenal. We would like to take these programs to the next level, and this is what allows that to happen. Monday starts early voting. Uh Saturday, the seventh, is the real deal. What questions do you have for me?
Mike, can I have a follow-up, a couple of questions I had at the last town hall?
Yes.
You know, he's focused on it, just being able to get everything built, or what you can't get built, the amount of money?
Sure.
And then, how did it have an idea on the coupon or the interest rate on the bonds? Do you have a range?
No.
Okay, so I guess my question to that is, how do you, how do I get comfortable signing up for the school district to take an incrementally not in debt, not know what the payment is gonna be, because it's not like it's way to eight and a half cents, what if it's fifteen? I've been involved in bond raises before in the past, and it doesn't always go the way you want it to go. And interest rates are rising, which is not great for selling fixed income. So, uh you know, trying to understand how you all arrived to eight and a half cents, and what kind of like, leave where we at is, because it's a three percent bond, I don't see that happening.
We have an expert, we, financial advisor we have to get to do this process. And one of the things I failed to say, remember, um, twenty-three cents got forty-eight million dollars ten years ago. Eight and a half cents is getting us ninety-three million now. So it is a great thing. You say, well, how in the world does that happen? And so, here's a way. And I don't know where you stand in the whole, uh, I'm gonna say solar farm stuff that's gone on for the last few years. That's not really about the solar farm, it's about the three thirteen agreement that is done behind it. Because it could be a solar farm, it could be a lot of different things. But the three thirteen agreement has been fairly controversial for the last five or six years, particularly in the area of the solar farm issue, uh what that is. And it's, it's, it's controlled by the state control. So it's out of our hands, it's something the state of Texas is doing to improve different things. We have the ability, if they qualify for a three thirteen agreement. At one time, there was a hundred million dollar company coming to town. We were gonna cap what we charged them on the M and O side at twenty-five billion, okay? We had a boardroom full of people one night over this, and I ended up in my office with them the next day. I'll take all the twenty-five million dollar companies I can take in town. That's a benefit to us. So you left seventy-five million on the bone. They weren't gonna come without this benefit, and that's just true as it can be. So you're coming to town, we get to tax you as a twenty-five million dollar company for ten years, that company depreciates to eighteen million dollars before the ten years is over, so we're taxing them full in about the seventh year. But on the INS side, there is no limit. So a hundred million dollar company, at our thirty-nine cents, we're taxing them full. That is the benefit to a three thirteen agreement that most people don't see or realize, because you don't talk about the INS side, you only talk about the limiting side. But we do those three thirteen agreements, so that when we get to bond time, it can be better for us than having to ask for twenty-three cents. So this, I give again, to speak the language, with this financial advisor that takes on this for us and tells us, eight and a half cents, and he takes into account those things.
Who checks his numbers in? I mean, you know, it's not, and we gotta, we gotta have somebody check the numbers here, and know, make sure we don't get ourselves in a bind. And the last thing you know, a one percent change is almost a million dollars on ninety-three million in interest.
There are so many checks and balances when it comes to school, things like this. I've not seen that go south for a school yet. There's no way in my mind, three percent all of a sudden turns into six percent for a school. Schools get a better deal on these bonds. I don't know where you buy bonds and all the different business things you do, uh but I don't believe that's the case when it comes to schools.
Well, I just wanna know, you know, how confident are you gonna be in a and a half, because it's coming up, and it's only got, it's ten, it's ten cents?
I don't believe we're gonna be able to do that if we wanted to. We would have to change the scope of what it is. If we tell you eight and a half cents, we can all of a sudden be a ten.
So the six, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I know it's depending on turnout. I don't know the turnout.
I'm just trying to understand, you're asking us to admit ninety-three million, so.
I'm in, I'm in.
I bet you're trying to wrap everyone.
Financial players, what they're saying is if this bond were to pass now, we could be possibly off in, is that kind of what he's suggesting?
Yes.
That's what I figured. These federal premiums aren't gonna go up for another hour, week, or more, week, or whatever.
And if DB, I could do another town hall and have him here. I can answer those kind of things. Yes.
You mentioned the mining. I don't know much about that. The Arctic, you got the old ones coming in, is this ridiculous? New folks coming in, and some of them being part of that, you, I don't know.
Yeah, um, before spring break of COVID, some city people kind of whispered in our ear, big stuff could be coming. And please, please know I'm making this up. Don't let this become things like a Toyota plant. Because a rail system, great electricity, an interstate, it makes all the sense in the world that that is prime property for those type of businesses. And I do believe those type of businesses have inquired, particularly before COVID. We know for a fact now, because we talked about it in our schoolwork meeting the other night. There is a rebar company wanting to come to town. We are in the process of a three thirteen agreement with them. It's another hundred million dollar thing, thirty-five, fifty thousand dollar jobs or higher. It's a big deal. They're trying to decide between us and Tulsa right now. If it comes to that mine, and it's in the dead end of that mine, it will make a huge difference. That eight and a half cents will possibly go away for all of us if that happens. Uh and that's in the works as we speak. Another three thirteen agreement, this one is far better than you could be done with the solar farm. But it's my understanding, it's a small portion of mine that they're taking up, so there's a lot of room for a lot of other things. Yes.
On the R J P campus, question on timeline there, and visiting an older campus, the improvements from the city capital improvements, that campus, are they planning on, I don't know, would have changed in the R J P or whatever?
So, the timeline, every thing's kind of based on, say, Travis. If the bond passes, Travis will start to be built in the school year next year. There's no way to be done in a year, two years. I think because of our supplies and things already made, you're gonna be three years, okay? Once that happens, and we're ready one summer to make our moves, the offices, the people in Bush will come there. And quite frankly, we have money in here to refurbish that just a little bit for those people. The committee decided, not kids, not gonna fund it. So it'll be on us, it'll be on our. We'll have to get that building ready without any of these dollars for people to move in there as office space. And I, you weren't here, but the night that the family was here talking about naming, I said, the concern I have is I'm not sure that I'll be at campus much longer. I said, that's fine, we'll have two choices. We can call it the Rowena Johnson Special Services Building, or we can take that name to one of the new campuses down the road.
Two, the new campuses. Can you question how, once Travis was in older city, or that it was chosen people in the places, or shared by, or that?
Sure age, it's the oldest we have. See, we're just trying to address some county in order of that age. Good question. What else? The terminology transparency, I know y'all had some questions earlier. What do I miss, and where do we need to be more transparent?
I think that people in the candy, they're gonna be aligned, both the law, I think they all lead. The school district needs the funds to do things that you're talking about. I don't know if you kind of large group of people that would be against it. I think people are gonna be concerned. But the question is similar to, what we think we're signing up for to fund it, is that the outcome? We're very close to the outcome that we can guarantee, that we're going to get. And any kind of transparency on the individual items. So schools, I'm building the Travis school and saying thirty-five million dollars, that may be a steal, or that may be the worst steal of all time. Because if you come back in two weeks and say, it's eight hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, and the most expensive elementary school built in San Texas in twenty twelve was two hundred and twenty-two dollars a square foot, then that's not, that's not okay. And so, but right now, people are just, people are left to just accept rumor, which is bad for the bond, right? Because you do need these things. I'll never argue that it did. But they're left, you're leading them to the rumor mill to get that information, and you're after the people to get it passed. You're after the people that right now wanna say no, and a lot of those people wanna say no because they're poorly informed, or not informed, or they're saying things like, I don't like it, you spend twenty million dollars, which is on a rental practice facility, and all the football games. Those are the things that are gonna be true, but they're left to make their decision based on that. And forgetting the fact that everything you said is needed, and it's gonna be worse tomorrow than what it's today. And if we don't do something about it, that's just gonna be a big problem, like you said. So any, I mean, any detail you can say, that here's the location of the school, here's how big it is, how many classrooms, how many students, we think we should, we should house in that, and here's what the state average says, that we should have a hundred square foot per child, and there's gonna be five hundred children in this building. Anything that makes me comfortable with that math. And I think you'll find a lot of community wants to give, wants to give the money, and they trust that it's gonna cost what you say it's gonna cost, and we're gonna get what we feel like we're gonna get. So anyways, that's my.
No, I appreciate it.
Is there a backup plan if the bond doesn't pass?
Best I would know, and if the bond doesn't pass, it may just purely be on lack of trust. My assumption is, if the bond doesn't pass, it will be because of the tax impact. So our only real choice would be, I guess, we just cut it in half, get half of it down, where there's virtually no tax impact. Uh we'll never benefit again from this forty thousand dollar home set exemption like we do now. And the three thirteen agreement benefit goes away within a few years, so it's.
The home set exemption is statewide.
Yes.
It's not just a pocketed tenant change. Some people would not realize that, you know what I mean? And it's, it's always, it was on the ballot before the bond was brought about. So in our eyes, we would think the home set exemption, having a bond together, would be a good, you know, team, or or combine together to be the best team for tax payers.
Well, we certainly went into this with the frame of mind, we'd like to do a bond that causes no tax increase. Uh and at one time, you know, that was the beginning. Things have changed so much, we got to the point where we realized there's an eight cent increase in this that we've come up with. Uh but our financial advisor, the night he presented, nobody knew that this forty thousand dollar thing was happening. So the night he presents and says, if this happens, this is what it'll be, it was quite a pleasant surprise to realize a small sliver, we get to basically say, this is a, this is a bond with no tax increase, just in that one line of possibility. There's a lot of things that counter that, really.
So it's a funny frame, that you have to wait until the bond does not pass, that you can bring another bond to the community. And in that time, I would put it as a phase bond. Instead of doing it in a phase, say, well, this ninety-three million didn't pass, we need thirty-two million for an elementary school. That would be phase one, and the community know. So a year, a year or two down the road, we're gonna go for phase two, which is another.
We'll have to do it that way if it doesn't pass. Somebody in the last meeting raised their hand and said, with, with all the benefit, the whole getting eight cents, ninety-three, why didn't you ask for the whole one fifty? Like, there's different frames of mind on that, going both ways.
But you're coming at the wrong time, with inflation being as high as it is. I mean, the taxes are going up, I mean.
Set up your Rachel O. You're right, it's bad time, first time, hey, bad time, the gas prices are high. When we started this process six years ago, we had no idea that when this happened. And it gets back to, when I was young and married, and we said, oh, we can't afford to have kids, and everybody said, you'll never be able to afford to have kids. I mean, these prices are not going down. I don't believe that there's a way that you could just wait on a better day. Uh we have a lot of things going good for us in this three thirteen agreement, some of those things. I totally understand that notion that that's a big number for right now, but those things aren't gonna get any better, really.
But then in your older community, you're just, doesn't hear that.
And so I go back to transparency. I don't, you know, and I know, I guess Facebook's its own animal of negativity, but if people say, they gotta be more transparent, they gotta, then, in my mind, you gotta come to this. There's no way I can put this three forty-five online and everybody understands. There's no way I can put the forty thousand dollar thing online and everybody understands. There's no way I can put the forty thousand dollar thing online and everybody understands. I, I'm totally open to, if you're gonna in public say that we're not transparent, we need to give you more information, right here, right now's the time. Come get the information. Uh, I don't know how to really be more transparent than this, than, than this right here. Uh, why, I mean, this is great crap. Why people that are fairly negative won't come and visit, I don't understand. Do what? You're right, that's a whole other issue.
So if we don't pass the law now, a lot of rates are still good, we can pay more or less on, or?
Sure.
If, if, if the law is like.
In the future.
If it exists.
So if any of these rates might miss, why not pass now for rates to increase?
I have a question, I have a question, can you come back with another bond?
November and May, November and May. So.
On a construction, so you have, uh, you have a projection, uh, for these projects, so just on the issue, then, are we getting our job that can, that job, you know, or?
Uh, we are in totally uncharted water with that kind of thing. Uh, our, our construction company, they have a set, they know how much inflation's costing to go up every month, and they have some form, but all that's kind of out the window right now. Nothing is wholly exactly true as it has for such a long time. So there are some very conservative wild guesses in some places with, 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 uh, with inflation built in as much as possible. It's gonna be tough, that's why I say, most of the time, projects like this, that I almost tell you they're good in a year, take two, I'm afraid this will take three because of supply chain and that kind of thing. Uh, very uncharted. Well, they're, these are budget numbers that we're talking about right now. Budget numbers to work with, and I go back to, I don't wanna be so off in that we're saying, we're eighty million dollars under, because we don't know where we're at right now. We're gonna do the best we can with the thirty-five million dollars. If it doesn't get us there, we are gonna have to throw our hands and do a new plan. I mean, so we're working with these budget numbers that we feel like are conservative, we feel like have inflation built in, it may not be enough, and we're not gonna, there's no way that we come back down and say, well, we actually need another ten. That's not even possible. Uh, so that's where I think it starts to answer some of your questions. We don't have those, those kind of luxuries to all of a sudden say, well, I know we told you eight, but it's really twelve. We, we can't do that based on whether you vote or not. There were questions?
Um, what would be taken by these in the current term of the season?
Not sure. And, and, and so we, you know, once again, very difficult to make that decision, and I know people wanna know, but here are the options, and all those things kind of change today. Uh, for a long time, we talked about this, this office going down there. Uh, this works for us, quite frankly, we use all of those stairs, and we don't have an elevator, and nobody will come put an elevator in this building. So we're one handicap person away from getting in big trouble because they can't get us there. I would like for our central office to not be two-story, whether that be us going to Travis, or us going to S S E S. There was a time we felt real strong, we could move down there and have a new central office. And once the plan got kicked around, I'm not sure that's so. Austin Academic Center, those of you that have been here a while and you're familiar with Austin, the oldest part of it got torn down ten years ago when I was here. What's left is fairly young. When we go talk to Austin principal, what are your needs? Well, I really need about six more classrooms. And it just so happens when you look at Travis, and Travis is three different ages too. If you did the same thing you did at Austin, which is tearing down the oldest part, you'd be left with a thirty-year-old, forty-year-old building that has exactly six more classrooms than Austin currently does. So Travis could be the solution for Austin, as opposed to thinking down the road or in the next one, we need to build a new Austin. Uh, that's the kind of stuff, we gotta get this ball rolling and kind of see where things shake out. I, I wanted to build those traps and hope that it was a piece of property that we could build the next campus on. You know what's said about that? It's too small, it's just took that neighborhood to the trench. Every time I say, I talk, I say the same thing about Houston, you can put a campus on there, only if you want two-story. I don't want two-story, I don't want them kids wanting to put downstairs and all of that. So we would like to have pieces of land, we don't have to have two-story over there. The next superintendent may love two-story, he may have a campus on Houston, he may have a campus on Austin. But for right now, those are kind of the things that drive some of our decisions towards what will Travis be.
So the new Travis, will it still be a language, or will you call it?
Yeah, what you're doing.
Call me?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm gonna get away from the foundation, but it's not a thing that, a good idea, uh, for the, the, uh, Johnson, uh, first, that, uh, it's a little mind, you know, so I would do, uh, the change, it's a little mind, you know. Y'all build fast, so it's not like you're, you know, building all those, like, boards.
All sense of, for it has to be, because there is no doubt. And here down the road, you got a little, you know, and then we're gonna need a name. And I think Roy Johnson is the perfect name and halftime name for something fresh and for something new. That's my opinion right now, those things change, everybody does that.
I mean, no, like I said, they just changed it back. Who's saying you're a little bit of a team, just to make sure that happens?
Uh. I don't know what I'm talking about.
So if the bond passes, or if the Travis, the news, if we're gonna be needing the news to work.
Yes.
And then that pass.
Yes, but, but, but the notion that Travis is the one to be the Travis is what I'm saying. Uh, seems oddly, there's, there's, there's no, there's no reason for us to think about the need to do a new name. When we replace SSES because, and the only reason you name schools in this sense, uh, so for friends high school, because there's no mirror school. So for friends middle school, there's no mirror school. So for friends elementary, there's no mirror school. You name buildings when there's been a mirror school. So when we build that fourth campus and it needed a name, that's when it makes sense to be given that name.
But that new, that new version of it was ready to get with the bond pass.
Yes. It's Travis, it's Travis, one Travis. It's current Travis is what I'm getting at.
Travis is a placeholder, right?
Do what?
Travis is just a placeholder, so you can name the operations and move them.
Yes.
It's just, it's just something, something to call it, so you're not saying the one on, the, the one that's over here on Main Street. It's just giving the name, so you're moving that operation's name and.
It's possible to do just what you're saying. It is very possible. Yes, that's very possible. We're not gonna make that decision now, that's very possible. That's very possible.
Because honestly, there are a lot of people that did this situation, and then were voted.
They would not vote because.
They're wondering why it's all coming out. There's no, we were a very good competition with you and the panel, like, you know, in the schools, we're ahead of that. No one in the community is ahead.
Good, 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 Tom? I'm with you, thank you.
Seeing, I feel like as a community, y'all are the best, so, I mean, I'm pretty sure we're all kind of on board with that. I hope that's, I hope that's the issue, I think, I think we love to introduce her, so. I think, I think we'll be able to win, when they decide that you're naming the school.
And a lot of people, from what I understand, if you don't know, that doesn't really have a better system.
Right.
So, you know, there's just a long way to go, uh, and the campus, that type of thing.
Uh, I gotta, you know, to tell you guys, we, we didn't say anything about it, because we're trying to be honest with you, so. I gotta, I gotta hit the first side of that. Yes.
I have two, uh, I think tough questions that I'm gonna clarify.
We only have one tough question. You're right, you're right, you have to ask the other. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
To Tyler's point, um, I think, what are you voting on, are we voting on any passing to the increase?
Yes.
They have an increase? Or are we voting on max bonding impact, so?
You're just voting that for ninety-three million dollars, we can build these projects.
So if your management advisor is projecting a point two five hundred rate increase, that doesn't come, and he's able to get ninety-three million for less, uh, money raised. Is that how it works?
So in the, we're running away from that. But you're going to, in the last one, for the bill, for the, uh, for the stories I've been told, um, the multipurpose, uh, test minutes, all that kind of stuff, the rate was at, so there was a choice tonight. You can get a little more building for the same money, or you can back up the money. And they got a little more building for the same money. It's minus ten at one time, now the plan to be just an eight yard, and now it's a hundred and twenty, it's a full building. Uh, so those things happen, uh, there are.
We're making a ninety million, and I'm certain that your management advisor, they can have three quarters in increase or less. So potentially you get a chance that we're gonna get a better, I don't know, it's just a number.
So, and if the bond we had, we get a bigger, better building, it'll be good, and when I got here, it was three million dollars left. So things went well. Um, Roy City, who did all this, eight million dollars short of what they thought. So what they did, they had to cut their project back. If this turns out to not be ninety-three, and it's a hundred and one, we'll have to cut our project back. Because ninety-three is what you're going to want to buy.
So, I definitely.
Yeah, hold on, I'm gonna say, you have another question.
Tom had an answer to that question.
Saying, we're from here, about the bond.
Okay.
And how we put the bond into package again. So that was the financial package, if the bond passes, and I'm driven, if we look at management package again, like the law of the management package, to the institution, the rest, fines, insurance companies, uh, all kinds of things, and company will invest. That might even be determined, when that happens. What are the rights for living, or the quality of the bond is, the student, the life bond, all that's gonna be done. You gotta do the best, like, a lot of it. And then either higher way, or either lower way, there are a lot of factors at play. Evidently, a lot of institutional issues, any sort of bond, but it's very hard to predict. Although we're in a, undone, right environment right now. You can read by half, that's the way, the next four or six months, you can read anywhere from three times to seven times. You can also read that it ends that year, the right thing to do now, like, that's very hard to predict.
The amount will not change.
The amount will not change.
Ninety-three million dollars.
Ninety-three, as long as you, uh, that's what you put in, you put in the percentage is ninety-three, so that's all you can go, you can lock it, that's, that's all you're, in like, access, like, some structure calls, and then I can have deal, and I'm clearing up, uh, how all that matters.
You have all the questions, people were putting my hand in. They are. No, I appreciate it. You know, I, I.
Second question. Second question with, I think, two, uh, uh, so, the, the elevation tool, just run up that amount, it looks like maybe, that's a thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars for a, for a, which obviously. Two and a half, higher than. Four times higher. Which is nice, it just means they took a lot of room in there for conditioning error. If we come out, and you really hit them hard, maybe they can sharpen the pencil and do right by us, not wait for money. And they're able to live for twenty minutes. Is the seven minutes gonna be to find that there's other things, or how, what happens to that extra money for all the projects? If they're all ten percent finishing, but they don't need it, what happens to that extra money?
So, I, I'm gonna try to give my evidence, and you may be able to prove it on. Uh, like I said, ten years ago, there was three million dollars left, and there was very little restriction on what, there was some restriction on what you could use that for, with very little. So, in legislation, the last few years, transparency's been the name of the game. Uh, there have been committees that, that haven't done sixty million dollars, spending all that. I am told that if there's any extra, to spend it on anything, I think it's gonna require another vote, or some level of accountability. There's new levels of accountability, that I'm not even sure what they are, but I, I know they're there, is that correct?
Well, there's, there's gonna be a, there's, 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 there's.
Say that again?
There's gonna be more people than just a few, that have, that have, that have.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Transparency's named again, all of the laws are built on that. Uh, I, strangely, a lot of this process started seven years ago, and our basketball team is doing so well. I think a lot of people in the front would agree, we need a new gym. That's where this whole process really started. A gym didn't survive, a forty million dollar gym didn't survive this process, okay? Uh, we can't just all of a sudden, um, decide that's all we're gonna do. Uh, there, there, if, if we had, if, if, if the committee had decided, let's put a gym on there too. A gym would have to be a separate item on this song. That's, that's a level of transparency that we have to have this stuff. And that's true, you're saying that. Those, those are the laws from the last legislative session, maybe even one more before that, I did. Get it all kind of done together. Anything else? Yes.
I think some of the hardware that I'm hearing from conversations is, how, how, how long ago did we build the, uh, the football field? And were these not maintenance issues at that time as well? Like the nine million dollars on the, did we need to do all the air conditioning and the flooring and this, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, the ten million dollars we spent towards the football field, which we borrowed against the M and O side, because we had that room. So once again, when I see, can't you do this without the taxpayer? Yes, all those projects we've done, we tried to do within ourself, so that we're not asking the taxpayer. We've spent twenty million dollars probably over the last ten years doing these little projects. A little bit at a time, spreading it out, handling it on the M and O side. That's all handling things while we could that needed to be addressed. The notion, I mean, like it or not, the football field had to be addressed. At least, the press box that was falling through, the stands that the metal was falling off, and I was told we built ourself, not, not many years ago. Did we need turf? I promise you, I can prove all day long, that that turf is gonna save us money from what we were doing, and the fertilizing and all the things every year to it. I promise you, it's gonna pay for itself. So, I realize, I can visit with certain people that think that was unnecessary, even if half of it was unnecessary. Saving that five million dollars for today is a drop in the bucket for a ninety-three million dollar need, which is, we took the approach of, let's handle some things that we can, right now, that need to be done. Uh, strangely enough, when I first got here, the softball field was kind of the newest, best thing we had. And, and in my opinion, we needed to address baseball. Baseball was a problem, because we couldn't do soccer and baseball at the same time, because they were fearful that a ball would hit a soccer kid in the head. Uh, obviously, we needed some park, I know it was, you know, there are people that don't like the fact that we moved the baseball field, but it was necessary. Uh, the drainage of the softball field was atrocious, we lifted that up, we fixed it. The things we've done, I, I can, I can contend all day long, were needed to be done. I know there's plenty, I, I can't imagine the notion of leaving all that stuff undone, so that we can save money for this, ten million, fifteen million, that really wouldn't change ninety-three million, a couple of dollars.
Right, it's just, it's just the opposite optics of it, when you see, we, we built a new football field, and then, well, we can't, we can't fix the air conditioning, or we can't, we're, we're, you know, all this other stuff is kind of getting pushed off, but some work got pushed to the top, it's just, it's just an optics.
I, I, I get that, we can fix it, I, I will tell you, so, it, we have, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I have a spreadsheet that has every air conditioner we have. We have a, a button, a line item, for, I think, sixty-eight HVAC a year. We replace the oldest sixty every year. Our buses is the best thing I can tell you. We have a sixty bus fleet, buses last about fifteen years. How many buses should we buy every year to keep that fleet up? We should, we should be buying four buses a year, there is no question about that. For every year that we don't do that, we're messing ourself up. I'm not speaking ill of the past, but we haven't always had a system like that. So twenty buses lets us catch up, and lets us get on that track. We certainly need to be, where there's line items, we need, we, we, we need to buy four buses a year, period. We just do, to keep a sixty bus fleet up that lasts fifteen years. We need to buy so many HVACs a year. We need a better plan for our roofs. We've gotten on those things, these things are allowing us to catch up in those areas and get in those rhythms that we've already, we're in them. If this bond doesn't pass, we'll still replace HVACs, it just won't happen as timely, and at some point, it's gonna catch up to us, and we'll have to do something to, to do it. Uh, but we have good plans in all those areas now, we haven't always had that. Yes?
If this bond passes, how long before you'll come back with another bond?
I'm saying ten years, I mean, bottom line, we're gonna wait till there's good bonding capacity. Uh, I, I say again, whether I wanna be an optimist or a pessimist, uh, there's some good things happening right now. I think it's possible that within five years, you won't be paying eight and a half cents extra. We'll come with you, come to you for another ninety-three million dollar bond, and it'll be for no tax increase. I think it's possible that the things going on in this community could be so lucrative in the next five years, that we really start to get ahead. If those things happen, as I'm told they're possibly gonna happen.
How many construction groups did you have, give you these estimates? Do you have two or three of your group?
No, we just worked with Gallagher, and no statement yet.
And then, so this construction group, your program manager, are all these projects gonna be run by that program group, like construction group?
Not all of them.
A little biased, and I can see some are maybe the open to community, you know, contractors. But how, how does that work with bid projects, is that the school control, or the programs?
Well, it's, it's our control, because we're doing, uh, contract manager, not at risk, we're doing agent. So we're involved in all that, uh, each and every step of the way. When you do at risk, you have no say, but we do agents, so that we can have a say here.
So then, so what you just said is that local businesses will have the opportunity to bid on the work, is that what I heard?
Sure. Now, you know, the lesson learned, when we did, say, the stadium, and we did all kinds of things, like, why don't we use local concrete and that kind of stuff? That group visited with those, and, and we, we learned things like, well, some of our local concrete contractors don't even wanna be there, because they don't like the two-story aspect. Okay, so, when we did the stadium, we were fortunate that there were some places out of Dallas that did bid, because there were places nobody local really would. When we did dug in, why not? That's some of what we were told, here's why. Uh, but in each and every case, it's my understanding, local bidders can bid on these projects each and every time.
And just, just for clarification, the delivery method, which is, the construction agent, they're not physically building the building, they're part of the project area, so they're, they're gonna get bids for HVAC, concrete, steel, all those things, which are local businesses, that's bonded, they're gonna put together bid packages for all those different things, you know? And so that means a total of opportunities. But like I said, there's gonna be, keep our spe, we're specialized, plus specialized, we're gonna throw them all together, just to see what, if you have four electrical contractors bidding on things, and, you know, one's, let's say, one's twelve, one's ten million dollars, one's three million dollars, or someone's seven million dollars, so, they're all like, ten million dollars, eight and a half, nine, which is three, well, they'll bid, so that's, that's the great thing of transparency of that delivery method. You get to see all those bids and the packages, and I know that we will do.
One, for example, all those roofs, that company won't have a thing to do with. We will bid those roofs to the local companies and go from there.
So in that scenario, with the four, and you got the eight, seven, and three, does Gallagher choose the subcontractor, or is?
It's, it's, it's them and us.
So what is the school, so is it, or makes the school board just meet and vote, and somebody makes a recommendation, so an example would be, um, the way some of the city, like the N C, or city council might operate, is that the, the, the city administrative offices, maybe it's the department head or whatever would show up and say, my department recommends we do X, and then the council votes, and they decide, is that the way this would work?
The governor and myself, yes, we take it to the board and say, we recommend you accept these bids, and they have to vote on them.
And if they come under, so they did that restore for twenty-five million, what do you do with the extra funds then?
I'm not sure, but that's the question they ask. Uh, when that happened before, we used it on other, on other capital projects. I don't think we have that leave any more. I'm not real sure what, what we would do, I mean, we're gonna do something, they're, they're gonna make us do something wise, but I'm not sure what that is.
Well, as part of it, they identify, they identify a hundred few, figuring out all the needs. They pared down to ninety-three, so there's certain needs outside of that scope, they pared it down to two, so they just go down the list, and they go, hey, what's the next thing we're gonna order? And going back out to the community, they ask and say, we can authorize X for this and that project. I said, there's, okay, there's, this big list, and they went into this kind of projects. This was, the top needs that, that group, and I speak for that group, that's what they, they deemed that was the purpose of the year at the time.
Do you work for the school, you seem to?
I don't know who you are.
I'm not, I, I like to work with all teachers for, uh, for the market, for the market.
You can talk the language, for sure.
Well, I, I just, I'll make clarifications, interesting to just always hear about, like, the time and the process, and I've worked in school for many, many years, there's, you never see like this right time. There's always, you know, a few years ago, it was terrible, you know, terrible time, it was a long time. I, I can remember talking in two thousand fifteen, looking at, at interest rates at like four and a half, to think, man, what a great time to look at interest rates. Now, fast forward, and a few years, you're going to two and four, and there, there was a time where schools district were refunding lots of school loans. So, I, if you look historically going backwards, I mean, I, every cycle was assumed to be another hurdle or impediment, but one thing that has always kind of increased is cost. And I can just, if I can give you an example, is, uh, Ponder Ice, which is southwest of the, they did a bond, one of its, for seventy-five million dollars. The first one failed, they came back and did it for seventy-five million dollars again, uh, a year later. And then we lose the scope, because the prices had increased in that small amount of time, so the prices are continuing to go up, whereas the, the, your needs also continue to, they don't stay, they don't stay stagnant. So, there's a lot of forces kind of always acting, like, kind of Mike said, but your, your needs are always gonna be growing, and if you don't kind of take these on at chunks at a time, it just starts to get weird, you know, like the bus analogy, it's just, you gotta catch up, and then, if the position, the, your age, you're gonna have to get in the lead in some.
All these numbers have been trimmed, that ten billion at the high school, there's twenty million dollars worth of stuff probably needed to be done, but it's been pared down to ten. Uh, we'll go in and do the highest need stuff. Security is probably the number one topic on anybody's list, so we'll go in, and I, I don't think there's gonna be any waste. Uh, SSES has three million dollars, and, and it's basically, we need to do some things to this building to help it last ten years. But I promise you, there's more than three million dollars worth of stuff needed to be done to SSES, but we're gonna do the best three billion we can, and hope it lasts another ten years for us right now.
Did you, did you, did you mention, uh, security for the high school?
Just in the, when we're adding there, it will improve security.
Any cameras or metal detectors, uh, someone asked me that.
I don't think we're ready for metal detectors, but we have a lot of cameras currently, we're starting to add to that. SSES, part of that, will be doing security in that vestibule there. Uh, almost any of them that we're, we're putting any money into, the first thing will be security. What else? Early voting starts Monday, what do you suggest, I did it between now and then? I'd have it done. Um, I think, I, I think we have a video coming out, I, once again, I don't know that it's as descriptive as this can be. You know, those things tend to be general, because, I mean, it's easy to get the weeds on this stuff, and harder to understand sometimes. That's why I like to, the personal interaction, where we can really dig deeper into some of it. Yes, ma'am?
I want to commend whoever took the time to do the stadium, and text to everybody.
My thumbs are killing me.
I want to commend whoever done it.
There's only four thousand two hundred families that did this, thank you. Thank you. Uh, we, I, I'll say again, I mean, it's fun for the darts to come at me, there's no hot tub in my office here. I benefit in no way. I'm simply trying to be a good steward, and try to be what you want me to be. If nothing gets done, the buildings we have will last for the amount of time I wanna work. But I don't wanna leave a mess for the next person. If there's a better way to do this, I am open to it. Say that again? Yes, it'll be on YouTube tomorrow, right?
Yep.
There's already one on our website, from the first one we had, that's an hour, twelve minutes to the same thing. What'd you say?
Oh, I said, there are possibilities, bullet point, uh, you know, the meeting, the thing that, that we were aligned to today, that other people may not know, was supposed to happen with government committee, or would there be some of the things that were discussed, that you bullet pointed?
They're all online, and they're all here, I'll just say again, I can keep telling people to go here, this is confusing.
Right, well, I think the thing is, there's outreach for the vote, and I think that, I mean, to be, those people at that crossroads, the vote is just saying, yo, get my PowerPoint back.
We put it on, we put the video on, I can put my PowerPoint on, but I'll say again, I keep being told, well, I looked at that, I didn't understand. Not until you come here and have the conversation, and people seem to really understand what a lot of that says and means.
So, as a work in the board, there's, we're here.
Yes. No, I appreciate it, I appreciate you being here, yes, sir.
Some of you don't, but on the vote, do you have to have just a simple majority, thirty people show up, and they vote yes, it passes, or does it have to be, how does that work?
Simple majority, yeah. And we do say things all the time, like, very few people will show up to vote. We say things like, if all teachers would vote, it'd be a no-brun, and for some reason, not all teachers vote. Those are just dynamics that we've tried to remedy for a long time.
Where are the early voting spots, it's one day?
I need to get that out. Say again? Honestly, somebody told me the other day, and there were places I had never gone to vote before, so I thought, ooh, that's different, I need to know that.
I know, early voting was one specific place.
I, I need to get a list, and we need to put that out, we'll, we'll do another, I'll send a text for another six or seven hours, and send to you where the, the voting spots are, we, we need to send that out, for sure.
In the future, can you remind us of meetings?
Well, I kinda like that, 'cause I almost forgot again today.
No, absolutely, we, we sent one middle last week and one today, didn't we?
Yeah.
So, that, that. You've got two mailers, I think, in your home, haven't you? Uh, so, there, there's a website, all this is on the website, um, there's gonna be two videos come tomorrow. I'm having another meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, is that Thursday? Do what? It's Wednesday? Like, two days from now? Much to learn, and, and I'm glad to do another one of these if needed, uh, I don't know how to determine if this is needed or not. Uh, we wanted to make sure we had this one before early voting, uh, so, middle of next week, or even after early voting start. Uh, I told everybody, if you wanna send somebody to my office, uh, glad to visit, I'm working, meeting with a church group tomorrow, Thursday night. Whatever group you have that needs to hear this information, glad to, glad to share. I am, when it comes to transparency, I mean, there's really nothing, there's no smoky mirrors here, there's no, there's no agenda, there's no trick. It's just trying to do the best we can with the buildings we have, and like I said, if there's a different, better way to do it, I'm certainly open to that. Uh, love to know what better way to get on some kind of plan, that will allow us to basically replenish buildings as time goes on.